This is the meeting in order. This is the regular scheduled meeting for Monday, June ninth, sixteen P M. Who's hard with Flagwood?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this season of preparation. Bless our students with rest and renewal, our teachers in their summer trainings, and our administrators as they plan for the year ahead. Guide our hearts and minds to serve with wisdom, compassion, and strength in the upcoming school year. Amen.
Do we have any other comments? No? Okay, moving right along. Superintendent's report.
Man, I miss talking with you guys. It's so great to be out here. Thank you. And Jason, what do you think next month when you want to pray in the meeting? They're gonna make you pray in Brooklyn area?
Do we have to have a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then roll call one more time. I mean.
I'm into Dershi. Here, Joe May.
Here.
You two.
Here.
And Roland.
Present.
I'm ready.
Here. Okay.
And this is Glenn. You did a killer go to on that one too. That's awesome. Perfect. All right. New law changes. I talked about this a little bit last year when we did a few updates. The cell phone ban. That is in effect. This is a new law. It will go into effect at the beginning of the year. It is not an option for this board or this community to forego a cell phone ban next year. We have to go with the cell phone ban. So next month, you will have a policy, the July meeting. We will present it in committee meetings, but you will have to vote and adopt in a policy with disciplinary actions that our administrators will have to carry out for the upcoming school year. So hopefully, we can get all that information out over the next six, seven weeks before school kicks back off. I'm going off of the July meeting. Sorry. We have one in six, seven weeks before August, but I'm just taking a parent communication. But we will, there's only two exceptions on cell phones. Emergencies or if you have a cell phone for a health condition. You're diabetic and you have a monitor that's connected to a meter on your body, whatever, it's measuring your blood levels. So we will communicate that out, but we will get that policy. We have O S S B A's cell phone policy that our administrators have already reviewed. I know West and East Middle School Admin have gotten with Barbara about processes and procedures they'd like to see implemented at their schools. For what we will promise this board and our community is that we will try to be as consistent sixth or pre K through twelve. I hope no pre carriers are bringing their cell phones to school, but we'll be as consistent as possible with our adoption of that policy and enforcement of it. I think the legislature had good intentions with this bill. However, it puts all of the onus and responsibility on your school administrators and teachers to, and so we will spend, I hope I'm wrong, and I hope that we have a great community adoption and support of this plan, but I have a feeling we will spend a lot of our time in August and September on cellphone enforcement. I hope I'm wrong. But that's just my early prediction for the next four years. Any questions about the cell phone ban?
So West, East, or East ends, they might have two different, I'm sorry.
No, they've already submitted like.
Oh, just submitted.
Yeah. So I challenged the principals before they left in May to be thinking about their current cell phone policies, how they enforce them, and knowing this information, how do they plan on getting buy-in from their teachers and communicating to parents and students what their steps and processes are gonna be. So I just wanna make sure that all of our principals know and our directors know and you know that we need that to be as consistent as possible pre K through twelve. So you're not going from seventh grade to eighth grade and it's a whole new set of procedures on cell phone. If I anticipate, like, okay, so this is only required for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. If the board so chooses, you don't have to do it at the end, the subsequent year. But if you don't, we have to present a policy to you every year, and we have to submit that to the State Board of Education. What our new policy is, it differs from the law, and it's just kind of administrative procedural hurdles that dissuades local boards from wanting to go out on their own. So if that's something this board would like to consider, we can do that, but let's try it this first school year and see how it goes. Okay. Protect Our Kids Act. This one is a new law, and I'm trying to explain this a little bit. So in the past, if we've had someone that we were needed to put on administrative or was accused of wrongdoing, if I, the superintendent decides to recommend that employee to be dismissed or non-reemployed, in the past, if the employee resigned, that it's done and over with. Before we get to that point now, in any instance, if an employee is accused of wrongdoing, I have to write up in factual writing, in writing, all the basis points and submit that to this board and to the State Board of Education, regardless if that employee chooses to resign during that process. So that's going to be a big change of practice for us in our office, but I think for school boards across, because you guys are supposed to be impartial for due process hearing if it comes to that. But I don't know how that happens if I'm submitting that in what I have in information in writing to you ahead of time and to the State Board of Education. So I don't know how this goes and shakes out. I'm wondering if this will be challenged in court pretty soon. Hopefully not by us, because I hope none of our employees are doing anything over the summer that would require this, but I'm certain someone's gonna have, because this has an emergency clause in it, so this has gone into effect now. So.
If you're having to provide a basis for recommendation for that reason or whatever that would be, it'd be the same information that we present if we had a due process hearing?
Yes. It'd be one-sided, just be my side.
Right. So.
It'll be hard to stay unbiased.
Right. But you're not getting any information from the, that you wouldn't be getting otherwise if.
And in person.
Right. It's not gonna be the.
Yeah, I still don't really know how this works, because in the past, you've always had the option to just, you know, resign if you didn't want to go through with all that. But now it's like you're gonna resign, but we're still gonna share all that information. I think at the end of the bottom line of this, there were some people doing things that we should not be reemploying them in the way around children or students. And they want to ensure that those characters don't just move on to another school district and get hired. But I'm wondering, there's gotta be some sort of civil rights, I don't know. Something, it just seems a little, little like, just because I choose to work in public education, that if I make a mistake, you guys get it, the State Board gets it. So.
Will the State Board have any say-so in the decision?
They can have the say-so in your certificate, if you're gonna keep your certificate.
But only in your certificate?
Yeah. So if they, they put your name on it, that we wanna investigate you or wanna suspend your certificate, we have to pull them immediately. You can look at like the Shawnee superintendent this past year, or whether it's the assistant superintendent in Glenpool, that the State Board can just call you up and say, we want to review this person's certificate or we suspended it pending hearing. They're no longer allowed to work in the districts.
So if the O E said, if they, if they follow the due process, the O E said, no problem, keep them employed, they can still pull.
The certificate and be.
Yeah, and then you're done. Yeah. They'll still get a due process hearing at the State Board, and if they're certified, we'd still have to pay them while they're on leave, but they couldn't work. So there's nothing that says the State Board of Education could come in right now and say, we're taking, we wanna look at Adam Leaming and Jennifer Dye and Erica Johnsons, and we're gonna put them on a suspension hearing. None, none of us can work for the district during that time or do any school business. And you guys would be on the hook until that hearing. And sometimes those hearings are months. I mean, the Glenpool one went over, I think, almost six, seven months, and it still hasn't been decided. So.
She resigned.
She did resign, yeah. Anyways, that's just a, I read that one today. I was like, ew, I don't know, this one, I thought this one we need to talk about, so you guys are aware of and our community's aware of, that we're gonna have to navigate this one together on how we do this.
There you go, dude. You can't tell the law here. You can't be involved. You already know the facts.
Um, these are other changes that have happened that I thought are very important. House Bill nineteen ninety-five. I put this one on there because usually when there's a law change, there's an incident that precludes, so why have all these to change? So S R Os and security guards are now, whether we contract them out, like right now, upon City Public Schools contracts with P C P V that provide S R Os at their full rate, if they were involved in the rape of a student, there was provisions that protect them, not protect them, but they couldn't face some of the harsh punishments that school employees get faced. So this law changes now that any S R O or security guard that even contracts with the school district is considered as a school employee. So in the instance of student rape. So that is very specific. So I, obviously, there's a community, something bad happened with school S R O or security guard. House Bill fourteen twelve, I think, is a good bill for us and something that I think this board needs to consider as we look at teacher empowerment program through the State Department of Ed. They had cleared up the language that teachers would be able to receive this, they would be cut, the extra money that they would get if they participated in the teacher empowerment program would be considered a stipend, not salary. So districts would not be punished or forced to keep them at that pay level if this program ceased to exist or funding isn't there, that it would be a stipend. So a lot of states have started to adopt the teacher empowerment program. More than just that, there's in May, and we've gotten some Tulsa schools and some Lindsay schools that have adopted the teacher empowerment program because of this bill change there. So something that I think we need to study and look at as administration. I've been promising this one for the last two years, and it has finally crossed the hurdle. Hat City Bill seven eleven removes chronic absenteeism from the school report card. So chronic, it will no longer be deemed for chronic absenteeism. They're still gonna track it, and if we show improvement on chronic absenteeism, we can score bonus points. And they also added bonus points if you provide more than one hundred eighty days and ten, a hundred or one thousand eighty hours of in-person days. We're at the ten eighty, but we're not at a hundred and eighty. We're at a hundred and sixty-five. So we would have to add fifteen calendar days and either, either pay or reduce the number of hours to make it ten eighty. So if this, we wanted to go with bonus points for improving chronic absenteeism, it's a high bar to get those bonus points, so we would have to just do a cost benefit analysis to see what it.
Well, we already had a hundred, ten eighty.
We are at a hundred and eighty when you figure in all the P D, parent teacher conferences.
Not me, the ten eighty.
We are at ten eighty, but you have to be not a hundred and eighty or ten eighty. You have to be at a hundred and eighty days and ten eighty hours.
Which we used to be like that. I remember a time where we went.
Oh, you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very good. We went a hundred and seventy-five days of practical school days. So they're like, we gotta charge them back. Yeah.
Bonus points. So I, I, I think a lot of our principals will be thrilled because we worked hard. I know this board is thrilled with chronic absenteeism. It's, it's one of those factors that we wish we could control as a school, but we can't. But we do want those kids in school. We wanna work with our parents and families to get to the school. And this will remove that punishment portion of it from our report card. Now, these all are waiting on the governor. I think have some good merits, but if the governor doesn't sign them, they go to, they're vetoed. It's called pocket veto. In Oklahoma, I was talking to this, talking about this one with Mr. Murray here. The O L A P bill would require or provide eligibility for teachers' children to get tuition, free tuition in any Oklahoma institution, that as long as they knock the income-based eligibility, and they increase that seven hundred percent of the federal poverty level. So you can see a family that through would have to earn more than a hundred and six thousand for a teacher's child not to get free college tuitions. That must be signed by June fourteenth, and if it isn't, that does not become law. Great Educator, this was an innovative grant program to help support districts. I thought it would be awesome with our internship program and some of the stuff we're doing. We used to have a T H P C program at the high school, but without this going into law, I don't know how we can sustain that and keep that going. And then House Bill fifteen twenty-one, I have a feeling this one is going to get signed. It's personal financial literacy components, graduation requirements. We already teach personal financial literacy, but this adds another half unit to it, and it also prevents alternate diplomas for cognitively impaired students. So I, I have a feeling that one does get signed there. Because why not? We adopted new graduation requirements last year. Let's add some new stuff to it this year. So it's always an ever-changing needle. So staffing updates or anything on laws, there's a whole bunch. We're gonna get close to it this week, Wednesday, it starts our conference, and the whole afternoon is spent on new laws and policies. So we will be attending those, our team, and we will bring all that back to the board and consider new policies. Judy's favorite time of the year.
Do you think that there is a recording vote gonna have any kind of an impact on statewide teacher recruitment?
I don't think it will on recruitment. It might in retention. Like, it might retain some talented teachers and keep them engaged in the classroom as people consider either burnout or if there are, some of the things I've seen from the other districts that have adopted the teacher empowerment programs created the rubric. So if they meet threshold, five or six of the different board identified thresholds, then they can apply for consideration, and there's a district committee that will grade out the rubric. So if your teacher ten that scores this and your student scores with this, there's a lot of different categories that you qualify, because you can't identify more than ten percent of your staff. So for us, that would be about, of our certified staff, thirty-five at most across the district who qualify for those teacher empowerment programs. So I don't think you're gonna see new teachers joining the workforce because of this. I think you're gonna see some retention. Oh, negative.
Financial impact of it.
This is all through the State Department of Ed money. The legislature sets aside a wide range of.
Did they put money in the budget?
Yeah.
In their flat budget board?
Mm-hmm.
How much?
Millions of lines on that thing, but they did fund it. I can ask that question this week and get it back to you.
But I don't want to be responsible with our money. But with that, at the same time, I can see where a teacher would look at that and say, okay, if I'm gonna come in and put in the extra time, energy, and effort into doing this program, and I'm getting used to having this increase to pay because of the stipend, and that program goes away, I'm essentially taking a cut to pay.
Correct. Yeah. And.
Negative financial impact.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's like anyone else. You get used to that money, and if you don't, that money.
And they're doing extra work, and that's kind of, to me, is like a merit-based increase of pay, because you're putting in more, give time, energy, and effort, your time, power, and pressure into it.
And well, part of the teacher empowerment program too, not just increase pay, but we have to add an extra contract time to it. So do, I think the highest level is up to fifty more contract days that if you qualify. I can present on the teacher empowerment program, it's been a while since I talked about it, but there's three different levels. And that's yearly, I don't know what the third one was, but you have that contract time plus they qualify for your initial five, ten, or fifteen thousand dollars. I think those are the thresholds. Don't quote me on that, but there's a whole formula out there from the S E on it. But yeah, Joe, that's, you're not wrong, because it's not a guarantee. That's why we never really wanna participate, because it says salary, and there's a law that teachers can't make less than the year prior. So if they hit that fifteen thousand, we'd be on the hook. So now it's stipend, and as you know, stipends can come, stipends can go. So regardless, you're not wrong, Joe. I think that would be pretty great. I worked hard, and I was at this level, now also I'm not at this level. Yeah, there's a lot of factors to it. So we can continue to explore that. I'm just glad I wanted to make that decision. I'm just gonna make a recommendation. You guys have to vote on it. Staffing updates. Okay, we were, Anne asked this question last month, and I was caught off the guard, so I, you know, this one's for you. She asked me what top positions are open right now. So right now, no administrative positions are open currently, and I touched on this a little bit in our budget presentation. Right now, we've got twenty-seven new hires on dock. A year ago at this time, we were at thirty-two new hires. That's why it says negative five. This year, right now, we have fifteen openings. Last year, at this time, we had twenty-seven openings. So a decrease of fifteen, or twelve openings at this point. So I guess key positions that we need to hire, an athletic trainer. We've only been trying to hire an athletic trainer for the last five years, so I'm optimistic year six is gonna, we're gonna turn the corner there. If you have any in your pocket, we will take it. I, I, I mean, kudos to this board. We've changed the stipend, we changed the responsibilities of the athletic trainer. There was a time that one athletic trainer was a teacher and an athletic trainer. We got rid of the teaching component of it, just to be an athletic trainer. And we are just, that is a hope that official won't bite, so I don't know what else to do on that. We've contacted Integrity, saying, oh, and we've tried. We're willing, I was asked, when are you gonna hire an athletic trainer? And I said, when you go to school and do your degree, become one, I'll hire you right now. So aviation B M I, we have two B M I instructors, openings at high school. I'm confident that would be one by the end of this week. U S history is open at high school, social studies, high school other positions, seventh grade math, a librarian, oh, we think we've got that field, second grade, we think we've got that field. I think it's time that we'll probably hire Kristy Hayes' position, who's only been vacated since August of last year. So I think we, we wanna talk about making some changes to that position if possible. We had discussed internally that, you know, she was housed out of this building. Is it, would it be better for her to be housed, or I'm not, I'm just gender assuming, I'm sorry. Would it be better for that person to be positioned out of the high school and working with kids and interns on social media and kind of bringing a more kids-centered focus to her pages? I don't know. We're just kinda looking at that. We're running those changes by you guys, if you think there's any merit to it there. Right now, no administrative positions up internally, because we have on tonight's board packet, the executive director of operations has accepted, pending your approval, Larian Davis from Stillwater Public Schools and, and most currently, Oklahoma State University over Zone Three. Robin, what was Zone Three? Was it residential housing and I can't remember. Oh, she's big enough, there's, that's the new zone, so basically, we work in the Big Twelve, that's what's happening. So anyways, I'm excited to bring her on board for operation. And I, I, we don't really have special ed opening, but I think this board, we would hire a special ed teacher we can get, because our student, special ed population continues to increase in numbers, and we will pay bus drivers. We did hire a bus driver last week, so it's a little less painful, but I would still take three or four, just to be comfortable on a daily basis and to move forward. Any questions on staffing updates? Jennifer has heard fair on June eighteenth, she's gonna hire and fill all these positions. And we'll be done. Just easy. No pressure. Get it done. Summer to do list, we have one more big bond project at indoor facility. We've scheduled the ribbon cutting July ninth at four P M. I hope you can attend that. It'll be hot, so just come and go inside. It'll be nice and beautiful in there. Now, it is not air conditioning, but we will open both, all the air conditioning doors and turn on the fans, so, but it will, will be a neat project. The East retaining wall is the last bond project that we can do, that we will be doing this summer. It will bleed over into the beginning of the school year, but they have assured me that will not impact any of the operations of East Middle School. It might be in the union for a little bit, but that retaining wall will be on the Sixth Street side, trying to keep some of that dirt from rotting onto.
We also have some money left over for sidewalks, concrete, et cetera.
And while you were in property meeting, we might have a little bit, but we're not ready to make those decisions yet. We are, we're gonna get these projects done, but yeah.
Because the East is only like a hundred thousand.
We're anticipating a hundred. I hope it's less than that. You know, in October twenty-one, when we pass that bond, it's only gonna be around forty or fifty thousand, but you know, you guys know what the pops have done, so we're anticipating a hundred thousand. But that's the kind of, we wait to do those projects till the very, but we've done a lot of cool projects in our district in those three years, so really cool. If you approve some contracts tonight in your board packet, we will be able to finish all of my vet roofs in the district, so every roof will have been touched. Look in high school commons and original fieldhouse at the high school, which is that big dome gym that's black and hot. So hopefully, we can get all those fixed and done tonight. And we're just in professional development mode right now. Last week, I spent with some area superintendents on A I. I'll talk to you a little bit about that. We have a tribal meeting with Ponkin Tribe as a follow-up to our previous tribal meeting earlier in the spring, as we, one of the goals for this year was to try to strengthen our ties with our local tribes and get more buy-in from them and more partnerships going there. Workforce opportunities, you have a P C B A contract for a continuance of our internship program. I'm really pleased to report to this board that we have, right now, tag is said, a hundred and seventy-six students signed up for internship next year. So it's just, it gives me goosebumps. I mean, I started in twenty-one, we had forty kids, and it was a hot mess to say, I mean, be kind to the previous individuals, but just some organization and some connecting our businesses with our school district. We're seeing the dividends paid out with our student participation. And then policies, next month, you're gonna get more graduation requirement policies that we gotta get done before school starts and cell phones, and I'm gonna learn what else at COSA, if there's anything else we have to have done before August. You know, this time last year, you guys were talking about student communication law, and we're pleased to report to this board, we had one violation, a self-reported violation of the student communication law. So I think that just speaks to the credit of this board's work and our communication, getting that stuff out there, not, you know, dilly-dallying around and procrastinating, but tackling it and then spreading the word. Kudos to our team for that. No line of things that you need to, Rave Panic Button, this was our app on all of our phones, that if there was a school shooting or an emergency, that we can push this button on our, an app, and it would go out to all of our first responders. Well, state contract this year through the State Department of Ed expired, so all the costs were gonna be given to the schools to foot or rave, or a variety of other measures we could choose from, that we would have to pay and implement in our school district. But at the last minute, legislature did appropriate funds to the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety, so it is covered for the next four years, so that is a good savings for us. One thing that we talked about from our data reviews, our principals at our sites were talking about attendance, and they were, you know, how much we're trying to work with parents on getting kids to school. And prior to COVID, this district and the board had a good relationship with Ponkin City Police Department and city attorney about a municipal tow violation for truancy, and our S R Os were enforcing with truancy tickets. Barbara Kusick and I met with the new police chief and assistant police chief and the new city attorney, and they are committing to reinvigorate that program for the next school year as we go in. And again, this is only for those that are just refusing to work for us or return our calls or meet with us, and it's just okay for their kid to miss thirty-two days without any doctor's notes and anything like that. We're not going after the kids that are chronically ill, that are hospitalized and have documentation, or families that are trying to get their kids to school. This is for those that, that we need assistance with and some teeth that, if you will, at the area. I think this is a big win for our community and shows our, kind of our forward thinking of our board. We have national site selectors touring the Philip sixty-six STEM building tomorrow with P C B A and our STEM coordinator, and then the next day, we have the North American Refinery corporate team from Philip sixty-six coming in to tour the STEM facility on Wednesday to hear about our programs and what we're doing. If you're keeping count, that would be two Philip sixty-six corporate teams within the last, what, three or four months? It's been incredible to, Judy, when was it? That was right before the school was out, wasn't it, at the Strang? That was their I T, that was their North American I T team. Yeah. I don't really, I've worked with the local refinery leadership team for the last ten years, and I've not seen as much action in our community this frequently, so I wanna credit our cool Philip sixty-six building and some of the programs we're doing over there, it's really neat. There are grants out there. The legislature appropriated two million dollars to O E Q A or some specialized government agency to do cell phone free grants, so if we wanted to apply to buy pouches or lockers or whatever, we can do that. I don't know what we really go for, but, and I don't really wanna put that burden on our administrators and teachers to check every phone into a lockable magnetic pouch or something like that, but if this board says they wanted to look at those grants, we can look at them on that. There is another round of opioid. There is another round of opioid abatement grants. This is money that was settled from the attorney general's office for all the opioid epidemic that the state faced, and they've got gobs of money and now they're granting them out on an annual basis. We went to participate with this a year ago at the city of Ponkin City, and at that time we were dissuaded from the attorney general's office because they really wanted to get municipalities. But then we noticed Norman Public Schools got a big grant for it, and so we've been talking with them about their grant and some of the things they've done for alternatives to long-term suspensions for students with substance abuse issues. So I thought it was a really neat program that their school has done. So Kate Pressnell, our assistant principal at the high school, was leading that effort to write a grant that would help maybe us secure some funds, bringing a program similar to our community. So that would most likely come before this board for consideration and approval, so for that moving forward. So obviously, you have to write the grant, that would, some sort of substance abuse assistance in your community, so we tailored it that way. If you followed my memo last month, or last week, I participated in an artificial intelligence group of school superintendents and jinx on Thursday last week, kind of had an initial first discussion about A I practices, what schools are considering and doing. You know, A I is, I actually said it's another disruptor, and one of the superintendents corrected me and said, maybe it's an innovator, not a disruptor, and I get what they're trying to say, but I do think we're, we've got to be mindful that, that we want to equip our teachers and students with this tool and know how to use it effectively in the classroom and provide some guidance from this building down to them on when A I would be most effective and useful, but also not losing that critical thinking ability to critically think and speak and write and perform those things. So I see a lot of heads shaking, that artificial intelligence is great for helping us be more efficient and helps us maybe create new thoughts and ideas to explore, but we do want to make sure that our students don't lose that capacity to critically think for themselves. But, you know, it's kind of like when calculators were a thing and everyone had that math teacher, like, no, you're not going to use that calculator, you're going to show your work. And we, as kids and students, we made that argument, but everywhere there's a calculator, I can just pull a calculator out. So I think A I is going to be the next calculator, if you will, in that we're going to have to be able to show our work and critically think, but be able to also effectively use A I to make us more productive and more efficient and more creative.
I've seen the term here too many times.
You think it's going to go that far?
This is coming from a guy that has twenty-five years of I T experience. I don't trust computers at all. I have zero smart devices at my house, not one.
Oh, you have a smart device in your pocket right now. Don't lie, Joe.
Are you in my Google, my Google spy device?
All right. Any questions from the board?
No, not of you.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Motion is required for the approval as printed, but each board member, if they want a separate vote, can list an item by number and then on the consent agenda, and we can have a separate vote. The consent agenda consists of the minutes from the May twelfth meeting, contracts and agreement under ten thousand, I'll talk about those just second, and activity fund custodians for, and bond authorizations for the next school year, and administrator designated for federal programs for the next school year. We had a long meeting in the property, we talked about all twenty items on the under ten thousand. Personally, they'll have any that I saw that were controversial, but if anybody wants a separate vote on any of them, we can do it.
Yeah, we, I was sitting here with you, we went through all of those.
Yeah, we went through all twenty of them.
I have a motion to approve items one through four.
Okay. Do you have a second?
She made a motion to approve.
I'm glad she said all the certain items. Sorry.
You all seconded that.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second, any comments, questions, concerns? Call for the vote.
Joe Baden, Anna Roland, Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Judy True.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Item five, consider and take action on the district budget for following F Y twenty-six. We just had a fairly long meeting on it. Do I have any comments or questions about it? If not, I call for motion to approve.
You don't get to adapt to the city representative's vote.
Thankfully, she made the power point.
I make the motion.
Okay, your comment, Joe?
No.
All second.
Got a motion and a second, comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland, Joe Baden.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Judy True.
Come on.
Item two, consider and take action on the following district financial reports. We had a very long meeting and we talked about items A through U. Do I have a motion or comments? Anybody have any questions on those?
I'll make a motion to approve items A through U on number two.
Got a motion and a second, comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Anna Roland, Judy True, Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Joe Baden. Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Item three, consider and take action on the resolution of Ponkin City I S D to join Oklahoma School Insurance, O S I G is a short name for them. What this motion is doing is raising our liability from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, but it is also raising our
Lower.
Extra from one billion to five million. So we are lowering the deductible from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, but we're also raising the lot, general liability insurance from one billion to five billion, and we're cutting back one point three, nine percent, nine percent in your first meeting?
Oh, eight percent, eight percent on this one. That's an eight percent decrease.
And that, I think you said, I mean, that we had like a symbol in the district that affected like multiple locations, still isn't, but one, two, and a thousand, but it's like if we had a massive health law come through and take out like three schools, and just leave us at one.
Right. But, but the key is that, is that million dollars to five million, that's really helping us on lawsuits, that type thing.
Some of the districts, some of other districts have to deal with.
Oh, yeah, Selina, Emma Call, King Fisher, I mean, they're, it seems that sex harassment suits now are five, six, seven million dollars.
I'll make that, Robyn.
Got a motion for that one?
Yes, all second.
Okay, comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Judy True. Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Anna Roland. Joe Baden.
Item four, consider and take action on the agreement with Cooperative Council for Oklahoma School Administration, also known as COSA, to participate in the COSA District Level Service Program for the next school year. Pretty simple, do I have a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All second.
Another motion and a second, comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Judy True.
Aye.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Joe Baden.
Aye.
Number five, consider and take action on a motion approving the renewal of the sublease agreement dated May one, two thousand and twenty-two between the districts and Kent County Public Buildings Authority for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as required under the provisions of this agreement. This is word for word from Ron Fisher, our bond expert. He's the one that put this wording in force, so we don't want to change any wording on this.
Go ahead and make a motion, Robyn.
Second?
All second.
Call for the vote.
Anna Roland, Judy True, Joe Baden, Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Number six, consider and take action to approve a memorandum of understanding between Ponkin City Development Authority and Ponkin City Public Schools. This is for the intern coordinator, we pay a portion, they pay a portion, and the intern program, in my opinion, is just doing great kills.
I agree, Robyn.
Anybody? Got a motion for this one?
I'll make a motion for approval.
A motion and a second?
Me, Nancy Zimmershi.
Call for the vote.
Judy True.
Come on.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Joe Baden.
Aye.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Number seven, consider and take action on appointment and bond authorization for treasury men's clerk, deputy men's clerk, board clerk, deputy board clerk, incumbents, clerk and purchasing agents as listed below. Those are, as recommended by the superintendent, do I have a motion for number seven?
I make a motion.
Any comments, questions? Well, Leanne, you're getting stuck again.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Judy True.
Aye.
Joe Baden.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Consider and take action on approval of science and mathematics courses for credit taken at Pioneer Technology Center for various reasons, need state approval, we have to approve every year, the science and mathematics courses along with some other courses, but those do have to be specified.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second? Call for the vote.
Judy True.
Aye.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Aye.
Joe Baden. Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, A estimate for American Roofing to install a roof overlay at Lincoln Elementary, B estimate for American Roofing to install, install a roof overlay at the Commons Area, the high school, C agreement with Grandy Og House, independent contractor to provide speech therapy, D estimate for bigger, better movers to move the pre-case center, E agreement with Blue Mark Energy to sell and deliver natural gas the next school year, F agreement with Chatamox Speech for speech language pathology clinical fellow, G agreement with Edgy Skills, Edgy Skills LLC for English language learners, support services, H ratification of agreement with Galaxy Business Equipment, I agreement with I S C International for our foreign exchange due to attend Ponkin City. That's one coming from France, isn't it? J agreement with Level Data to provide software to connect P C P S systems, higher school, K agreement with Angela Montenegro, N C S B, N S E D, S M S, well, that's a lot of letters behind the name, for school psychology services for the P C P S students, L ratification of agreement with Next feeless to provide phone service, we've got a good discount on those that eventually go away, agreement with Oklahoma School Assurance Group for workers' comp, agreement with clinical business, N, agreement with Power School for online contracts on board and critical expiring, O, P agreement with R F R for district legal services, that's a standard fifteen thousand dollar P O that we're issuing for them, R agreement with Supervision Consultant for Braille Certified Judicial Impairment Services.
You skip Q.
And that one we have to do by law, S proposal for train to install wireless controls.
You skip Q.
Does, did skip one?
You skip Q.
Q? Okay, quote for solution tree for professional development. We raised, I've skipped some of these, we've talked about them in our property meeting. We did not miss one. Quote from solution tree for professional development for East Middle School's town. S with buffer train, with a wireless control units, that's for the new Commons Area and the gyms that we're putting in. T contract with Winter Road Tally, that is a non-binding contract, it's just saying, if we want to, we can use them, and that, is it? Again, we've talked about all those in the board meeting.
Hold on a second, can I make a motion to approve all of the C through T?
All second.
I would like to pull the nine and B out as a separate vote.
For a separate vote on that, three and D. Okay. So the motion is for C through T.
T, all second.
Got a motion and a second? Got that, Leanne? Call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland. Judy True.
Aye.
Joe Baden.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi.
Aye.
Okay, now we will have a separate vote for items A and B. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for A and B.
Do I have a motion?
All second.
And a second, we've got it. Good to go? Call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland. Judy True. Joe Baden.
All second.
And Nancy Zimmershi.
Motion carries. Number ten, motion to convene an executive session for the following purposes to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation and employment of personnel on attached detailed personnel report and to discuss negotiations with the I C T. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All second.
Motion and a second, call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Anna Roland. Judy True. Aye. Nancy Zimmershi. Aye. Judy True. Robyn Riley.
Let's do the executive session. Return of the session. We're cited by the Lord President that the minutes of the executive session were kept by the board men's clerk, that would be you, Leanne, and will remain candid. Consider and take action on the recommendation of termination, reassignment, resignation and employment of personnel, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All second.
Call for the vote.
Robyn Riley.
Aye.
Judy True.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershi. Joe Baden.
Aye.
Anna Roland.
Do I have any new business?
Aye.
I know new business, except if Leanne does such a great job, do we need her anymore?
Probably no. I mean, if you ever give a day one scholarship, we won't have to worry about it.
Good job, Leanne.
Adjournment, do I have a Motion to adjourn.
We're not, we're not
It says on here, motion required.
You can go out, you can go and call the business on the other.